Okay. Thank you all for attending the primary candidate forum tonight for Isaguac City Council, Position Six. We're excited to welcome all of you who are here tonight with us at Blakely Hall, as well as those watching the recording at home. I'm Lindsay Pinkston, Executive Director of Highlands Council, and I want to give a special thanks to the candidates for being here tonight. I also want to thank the City of Isaguá and Tim Smith for sound support and recording the forum, which will be posted on the city's YouTube channel tomorrow. Lastly, I want to thank Chelsea Music, our timekeeper for tonight, as well as Naina Milligan, our moderator. Naina Milligan is a longtime resident of Isaguá, dedicated to both community and the environment. She has previously served on Isaguac City Council, as well as numerous commissions and committees, including the Urban Village Development Commission, the Isaguá Wayfinding Steering Committee, and the Transportation Advisory Board, which she chaired. She currently serves on the Isaguá Planning Policy Commission, where she provides guidance on planning for Isaguá's future growth through the city's comprehensive land use plan. I know Naina as a neighbor, volunteer, environmental steward, former Highlands Council Communications Manager, and friend. I am happy to introduce her tonight in her role as forum moderator. As moderator, Naina reviewed the 2023 Isaguac Highlands Community Survey to understand topics important to you. Through this, as well as having members of the community submit suggested questions, Naina developed questions for the candidates that would give the candidates the opportunity to address the concerns of the community. We are fortunate to have Naina's experience and dedication to the community. Please help me welcome Naina Milligan.
Thank you, Lindsay, for those kind comments and that way-too-length introduction. Now, excuse me, I have to look through my voter's guide and pamphlet here to find my notes. Okay, here we are. You all have these handy on your kitchen table, right? Here are my notes. I want to thank Highlands Council, as well as Lindsay, for putting on this and sponsoring this forum. As a resident of Isaguac Highlands, I am proud to be a member of a community where we foster lifelong learning and participation in civic life. I will present questions to the candidates, rotating the order of answering, so that all get a choice, a chance to be first and a chance to be last in answering. Please mind Chelsea's time cards, she's sitting right in front here, and stop on or before the time that she tells you to stop. I don't want to interrupt you, but I will if I need to. And then also, please do not direct your answers to or confront another candidate. It's not a debate, it's just, it's a forum. We want to hear from you and about you. These questions, as Lindsay said, were inspired in three ways: the questions that were community submitted, the Isaguac Highlands 2023 Community Survey, and by my tracking of community concerns and the City of Isaguá's strategic direction. All questions were written by me and kept confidential. We do this to exercise fairness and to test the knowledge of our candidates. With that, I'd like to practice with Chelsea what these cards are going to look like, so you can help use it to manage your time. So this is, you'll have a two-minute time to answer your questions. This is what's going to come up at one minute, so you know you're halfway through. Thirty seconds, you better start wrapping. Five seconds, you've got to wrap, because next thing she's going to do is put her hand up. And then I'm going to say, "I'm sorry, but time is up." Thank you, Chelsea, and thank you for being here. And now, to start things off, I want to tell you a little bit more about the game rules. We have two minutes for every question, and we're also going to have two-minute opening comments. There won't be any closing comments tonight. We want to get through as many questions as we possibly can. And I'm going to introduce our council candidates, and go ahead and applause at each one, and then I'm going to randomly choose who gets to make their opening comment first. I've got cards here that I'm going to choose from. Okay, so let's say thank you to Marques Lazzara, thank you for running, and Victoria Hunt, Katia Zakharov, and Sam Sheehan. Thank you, all of you, for running tonight. And for the opening comments, I'm taking these cards, I have them upside down, I'm mixing them up, so I don't know who's going to go first, and I'm going to turn them over, and I'm going to say the order. We are going to start with Sam, then we're going to go to Katia, Marques, and then Victoria. When we get to the questions, I've already arranged an order for the questions, for each question that gives everybody a chance to be first and everybody a chance to be last, and everybody to follow somebody else. You know, I've really tried to mix it up quite a bit, so it's really fair. So again, Sam, it's your chance, your first opening comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Naina. My name is Sam Sheehan, as you can see on my note card in front of me, and I've lived in Isaguá for about 24 years now, and I grew up here. I grew up watching a small town with a lot of dirt roads turn into a big city with a lot of paved roads and a lot of housing developments, and I've seen the successes and the problems that come with a growing city. And I recognize that while those problems do need to be solved, I don't believe that the free enterprise of Isaguá businesses should be sidelined. I don't believe that the individual liberties or property rights of residents should be swept to the side or swept under the rug as far as public policy, and I want to make sure that I make it to the city council to make sure that those are championed. And I believe that with the help of the rest of the city council, I can make sure that problems like traffic and housing are solved with those tenants in mind, and that solutions are found for things like better policing, better education. So those are my thoughts on that.
Thank you, Sam, and thank you for not clapping. You know what we're going to do? I just made up this rule. We did our clapping fairly for all of our candidates, and then let's refrain until the end of the forum. Does that sound like a good idea to everybody? Okay, so if you can resist, I know it's hard, that's why I jumped in quickly, and then at the end, we'll give a thank you to everybody. And Chelsea, I'm going to edit you a little bit, too. Can you hold up the card until the next card comes up? That might be helpful to track, because, you know, they're thinking their thoughts and not really where they were. Okay. Katia, boy, just random that you are next and you're right next to Sam. Go ahead, your turn.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Katia Zakharov, and thank you for being here tonight, and big thanks to the Isaguac Highlands Council and Naina for organizing this event that makes us much closer to the residents and makes us hear what you think and makes you hear what we think. I would like to say a little bit about me. I'm the first-generation immigrant, and I came to the United States almost 20 years ago. I am a three-year resident of Isaguá. My education is in economics, so that helps me very much understanding our issues and problems in that kind of way. I am also a small business owner with overall experience over 30 years and 15 years in the United States. I've lived in very many countries of the world, from Europe to Asia and here in the U.S. My biggest priority in my program would be, first of all, affordability of living in Isaguá. I myself was a renter for over 16 years, and finally, three years ago, the opportunity arose, and I was able to get an arch subsidized property. And I know those are very rare, and those are very needed. So affordability of living includes not only unaffordable currently housing, it also includes a lack of public transportation that many of our residents would like to use, and we are not there yet. It's also affordable childcare that is needed for many families. Another part of my agenda would be a crime prevention through programs to help people in mental crisis, drug abuse, and involving community members in crime watch and prevention programs. And of course, the last, but not the least, building connection between city officials and city residents, so everybody can stay informed and make decisions in the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Marques.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Marques. And through my military service, I've learned about teamwork and leadership, which I plan to bring to this council, not that it doesn't already have it, please don't take that as that. But my diverse vision for the future of what we can achieve is involving everybody in decisions. My platform is primarily to serve the public, so I work for you. That is why I'm asking for your vote and to move forward with this campaign. Now, a lot of issues that have come up in speaking with the public, as had been mentioned previously, and I'm sure are on many of your minds, traffic, crime, housing, one of the things that I've found has come up repeatedly is infrastructure. There are concerns about the water, the pipes, sidewalks, roads, which all has to do somewhat with, not all, but has to do with the traffic, how that impacts things, and then that impacts the environment. What I would like to see is, instead of focusing on new developments, improve what we already have and make sure that what we have is sustainable, both for ourselves, our children, because I like it here. I've been here about seven years. I moved here to be close to my son, and I want to see him grow in an environment that he can flourish. Anyway, five seconds.
Thank you. Victoria?
Hello, my name is Victoria Hunt, and I have had the honor and privilege of serving you on Isaguac City Council for the last six years. The way that I keep track of it being six years is actually that when I started on council, I had a six-month-old baby, as well as a toddler, and he is, my youngest is now six years old, and my then-toddler is now going into fourth grade. I have really used this experience as a working mom to be a guiding light for me on council. Isaguá is a great place to raise a family, and it is important that we continue to ensure that the decisions we make make Isaguá a great place to raise a family and a great place for working families. Additionally, I know that whether it's swimming in Lakes of Mamish, or hiking on Cougar Mountain, or just looking up at the beautiful Isaguá Alps and seeing the mist float over the trees, one of the things that makes it really special to live here is our beautiful natural setting. I have a PhD in ecology, and I have experience working as faculty at University of Washington in Land Use Department, and I bring that experience with me every time I go into council chambers to ensure that we protect our beautiful natural setting for this generation and for generations to come. I have heard from you that affordability and having multiple generations be able to live together in this community is very important. I have also heard, over my time on council, about the traffic and making sure to make it easier to get around town, and we are putting in intelligent transportation systems and making improvements in a number of areas. I anticipate that I will be talking more about those and more topics over the course of this evening. Lastly, being an effective council member means collaboration, and I have the endorsements of all of my fellow council members, as well as Isaguá Mayor Mary Lou Polly, and our state representatives, as well as Kim Schreier, our U.S. Representative, and that's really a testament to me collaborating. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, all of you. And now that we've done our opening comments, I know some of you brought notes for your opening comments. You can set them aside now, so they don't have any printed pages up on the top, because this is a forum, and we all want to know that you're speaking from your knowledge rather than from notes. And here we are in person again after the pandemic, so I'm really glad to clear the deck. So clear the deck of anything that has writing on it, and just have blank paper for taking notes. And we are going to go into our first question. And I started off the order in the same order that it is in the voters, in the ballot. So it will be Marques, Victoria, Katia, and Sam, in that order, same order that you're sitting, because that's the order that it was in the ballot. So our first question is, what do you think will be the most urgent and challenging issue to address Isaguá, to address in Isaguá if you are elected as Isaguac City Council? Marques is first.
Picking one topic, as I stated in my opening statement, the one that has come up is There were, I've had several complaints about unfinished sidewalks, potholes, problems with the water, and the general, just the general cleanliness of certain things. I guess we get, we get water from elsewhere. Again, you know, just be upfront about it. I don't understand how it all works exactly, and that's part of why I want to be part of this process, and why I'm getting input from people who do have the knowledge of how things work. When I don't have an answer, I'm not going to say I don't know. I'm going to say, "Let's find out together." And I think that's very important. I think it's a very important quality that I possess that, again, leads back to my all-inclusive plan for how things can work. So I guess, in short, to answer the question, infrastructure. Thirty seconds. Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria?
I think that one of the biggest things I noticed when I moved here about 10 years ago was the pace of change in the city. The city is growing, and we are a welcoming community. I think that both on my time on council these last six years and going forward, one of the biggest challenges is preserving the things that make Isaguá such a special place to live, and also ensuring that development has long-term community benefits, and that we are preserving all of the things that make us special, so that as people continue to be welcomed into this community, that we have development that meets the needs of the people living here. So I would speak to one accomplishment on this, which is an example, I think, of how on council we can actually make positive change, and that was recently. Over the last 20 years, we've had a land use code that has been frankly become out of date. And so on council, as the chair of the committee that looks at this and makes recommendations to the rest of the council, I was a champion for really doing a deep dive, working with hundreds of community members and hundreds of businesses, to ensure that we had a land use code that met the expectations of our community. And through that process, we heard about the kinds of developments that people want to have. We heard about how it's challenging for children coming back from college to find housing in this community, and what a hardship that is. And so we have aligned our code, which is one of the tools that we have on council, to make sure that we can meet those needs in our community, and I think going forward, that will continue to be a focus.
Thank you. And I'll let Chelsea get in order there. Next one is Katia.
Thank you. So to me, the biggest priority is the unaffordability of living, that I already said in my opening speech. Well, we have lots of issues with that. First of all, it's, again, it's housing. Currently on the market, I was checking not that long ago, we have two three-bedroom units that are under seven, sorry, that are over $7 million, and only one that is under $700, and it's exactly $700,000. So this makes it very much unaffordable for people to buy and leave here. All of our essential workers, who are making mostly under $100,000 a year per household, they cannot afford any housing. All of our, like, youngsters who are just graduating college and start their life, they cannot come to Isaguá to build their life here, they cannot buy housing here. So my proposal would be that, again, with all of the new rules that we now have, and with the ability to build townhomes and duplexes, triplexes, and quadroplexes, when, before we could only build single-family homes, we develop that a little bit more. We work with arch program, and we have more affordable housing on the market for people making $50,000 to $150,000, which is basically the majority of our residents currently. And, well, that would make it a little bit more affordable to live here, and that's to start. And then, of course, we have to provide a little bit more transportation options that are now, with Metro Flex, would be a little bit met, but I really would like to develop that issue. And the other thing is that we need a childcare, and I'm already, I was already in touch with nonprofits. Thank you.
Yeah. Sam, your turn.
I think the biggest problem facing Isaguá in the next five to 10 years is going to be one problem that is also, in a way, three different problems, as I see it. And the problem is population rise. Folks want to move out of Bellevue because folks wanted to move out of Seattle, because they wanted to move out into the suburbs and start a family, and so that leaves Isaguá. Well, we have a lot of folks moving to Isaguá, and it's a multi-tiered problem, because not only is it housing, as Katia said, it's traffic. If you decide to suddenly put in high-density housing, or duplexes, or triplexes, without first solving the traffic problem of downtown Isaguá and other high-congestion areas, you have construction clogging up those roads that are already clogged. So it requires a multifaceted solution. To solve the entire problem of population rise, you need to figure out how to solve traffic and housing. So...
Good. Okay, question number two. Presented by the mayor, the city council works and approves the city budget. What are the top three things you would prioritize in the city budget? We're starting with Katia, going to Marques, Sam, then Victoria.
So for the budget, because I am very much for the affordable housing, and now I understand that it will take the next five to 10 years to develop it, and that is why I'm talking about this now, because if we're not starting now in five to 10 years, we will be in crisis completely. That will actually, yes, require infrastructure change, and we, as I heard from developers, we need to completely renew our pipes, so that they can accommodate new housing if we're building that. Another thing is the traffic, but traffic is also being worked on, and again, it all takes a lot of time and a lot of money. But again, if we're talking about issues now, then we will be having results in five, 10, 15 years. If we start, five, 10 years later, it will be a little bit too late. So again, housing, housing would require roads and infrastructure, then it's a public transportation that needs a little bit more communication there, childcare, and crime solutions, but I know that it's already very much in the budget, so I think we should be all right there. So, yep, those are my priorities.
Thank you. Marques, you're next.
I've already mentioned infrastructure. I'm going to say we go to police, crime, guns, things of that nature. We all want safety. It's my understanding that the police force has been in lower numbers recently, the mayor is working to get it up to capacity or adequate numbers. I want to make sure that the people of Isaguá are safe, and I think that starts with police and fire as well. The, I don't know that I need to go much more into that. What else did I write down here? Traffic. We need to figure out what's going on with traffic. I live right next to the hatchery, and from my balcony, I can see the traffic on Front Street at, she's starting at 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, and then especially in the evening. It's horrific, and these are, these are big vehicles going through there. I don't know that I'd want my son walking across Front Street to go to Clark Elementary. That's, I guess that would be number two. Moving forward, number three, open spaces and parks. I think we do a very good job of these things, or there are a lot of nice parks and friendly areas and open spaces to go. They are, they are needing to be kept up and possibly improved, I guess. I don't know. That's all. Running out of time.
Thank you. Sam, you're next.
I think that the top three items that should be on the budget, besides whatever current city council will probably already have, would be, first one, more effective policing practices, and by that I mean paid training hours for self-defense tactics, weapon retention, anything else like that, and also required and paid outreach hours. I think cops should be members that are known, members of the community that they serve, and I think it's important that a certain amount of those hours go towards going out, meeting with the community, making themselves known, and getting to know the people whose neighborhood they roll through at night. I think that's important. Second topic is infrastructure. It's just roads. I drive over roads on I-90, on other roads throughout Isaguá, that sometimes have potholes, and that's not a major thing. And the third thing is just funding for events. I think events are incredibly important for bringing people together, and I know that, for instance, Salmon Days, it's the largest two-day fair in the state, and it is a tremendous forum for all sorts of residents of Isaguá to come out and be together and share food and share culture, and I think we need more of that. And it's not a thing that you need to force, it's just a thing where you need to create a medium for people to come and visit and talk to each other. I think that's important.
Good. Thank you. Victoria?
Thank you. Well, police and fire together represent public safety, which is one of the most important things that city budgets for, in our budgets every year. And I believe that, first of all, we are leading the way in a number of areas. We've instituted new recruitment practices for our police, and we've made sure that they have the resources that they need when they're outgrowing their facilities. We're working to plan that they have the resources that they need. So I think firstly, in terms of budgeting, we always want to ensure that we are meeting the public safety needs of the community, and I know that is very important to you all. The second area is infrastructure. That includes many of the core things that the city does well and that we're working on improving. For example, very important to proactively maintain our sidewalks, proactively maintain our pavement, so that you don't run into a pothole. proactively maintain our pavement so that you don't run into a pothole, so that we, we repair the road before it gets to that point. So we have heard from you, we need to be proactive. And we are budgeting accordingly so that we're taking care of those issues. And then lastly, over the last several years, we've really expanded our human services programs. And these help the people that are most vulnerable in our community. Also, our human services program has allowed us to have a co-response with our police department. So when there's somebody in crisis and you don't know who to call, oftentimes the police get called. But this allows us to have dedicated people with behavioral health expertise that will come and respond to those events with or in lieu of police. And I would like to continue to make progress in that area and lead the way.
Thank you very much. Our next question, we'll start with Sam, go to Victoria, Marquez, then Katja. Many people talk about traffic and traffic safety. And this was chosen as one of the main concerns in the Issaquah Highlands 2023 Community Survey. What do you think are Issaquah's traffic issues? And how would you solve them? Again, we're starting with Sam.
Once again, as I mentioned before, I think Issaquah's traffic issues are, happen mostly at rush hour. I think high-traffic areas like 900, Sunset, and Front Street, and other roads like those are the most congested. And if it were up to me, I would get local businesses involved. I would send out a survey to every Issaquah business. That would essentially ask them how many employees they have that travel across Issaquah to and from work. And based on a certain number of employees, they would be eligible for either a tax rebate or a tax credit or a rent deduction or something like that, something to incentivize the business to engage in this program. And what it would mean is that essentially the businesses would coordinate with City Hall to change and flex work hours. And that would change when those employees get out of work and go home. And hopefully, that would take that really large spike at rush hour between, you know, four and six, or three and five, and spread it out. And this would maintain the free enterprise of the business. It would be voluntary for them. It would allow for work schedule flexibility for the employees that did want to engage in this program, once again, voluntarily. It would reduce traffic. And it would allow for financial easing for the businesses that want to take part. So it would incentivize every, every aspect of this program. Being new as I am, I don't know how easy that would be to implement. So I would rely heavily on the city council to tell me, is this doable? How do we go about it?
Thank you. Next is Victoria.
I know that, I know firsthand that time spent in traffic is time that you could be doing pretty much anything else that you would rather be doing. So we have taken a lot of steps, and I would continue to focus on this. But for example, we can have intelligent transportation systems. That means synchronizing the lights. It also improves safety. We can be sure that we have the cutting-edge technology in that regard. We also have done surveys for the community so that we hear directly from you what improvements need to be made, at what intersections, what do you have in mind for your neighborhood that would work best? So we get that direct feedback. And we've had some really successful programs working with neighborhoods, hand in hand, to make the changes that, that they envision that will improve the traffic safety for them. We also are making sure to have ways around town that are not traffic. So not everybody has a car or wants to get around in a car. I certainly enjoy walking trails with my family. And I know that that's one of the, one of the very special things about Issaquah is all of our pedestrian pathways. So I think it's very important that we continue to give safe options that are non-car to get around town, whether that's biking or pedestrian access. And so as we, as we grow, we need to make sure that we have options that people feel safe getting around, whether they don't have a car or choose not to use a car. So those are some of the, the things. And then, of course, we also have many large infrastructure programs in the works to make sure that we're addressing, as I was saying earlier, our pavement management and our sidewalks so that our infrastructure is maintained.
Okay. Thank you. Marquez, you're next.
I, I think a simple answer would be incentives for carpooling, biking to work, walking to work. Kind of radical idea that I have in mind is the electric scooters. If anybody's seen those in downtown Seattle, they're little green things. And you hop on, get on one point, take them somewhere. I don't know exactly how that would work with, with this, with the structure, with, excuse me, with the hills and all that of here. But I think it's something that could be looked into. And, yeah, you know, but a lot of that has to do also, as has been pointed out, with the infrastructure. We need to have viable pathways for an increase of bikes or scooters or things of that nature. Widening the roads is, it's one answer. I don't think it's the right answer because then you're getting into removing buildings or removing free space. And that just, I think, just creates more congestion, or at least the potential for it. So this is something that I would definitely want to hear from residents that do travel within Issaquah, whether they're biking, driving. How do they get around? How, what are ideas that they've come up with? This is the kind of open forum that I think would help bring us to a reasonable solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Katja?
Okay. Well, Victoria said it very well about all the infrastructure that we need to upkeep and all the pavements that need to be built. I completely agree with her on that. I would like to add that actually in downtown Issaquah, the majority of our traffic is not belonging to Issaquah. It's actually, is pass-through traffic that, that would normally use the 18th route. And it's currently, because of the 18th route, is not in the best condition. It's very dangerous. People are passing through Issaquah. So I know that that is in the plan. And it will take another, again, five to 10 years, as it normally apparently takes. But that would be the priority for us, that we are basically on a position that I-90 should, sorry, 18th should be expanded. And all of the traffic that goes currently through downtown Issaquah, and I believe it's 90% of it, only 10% belongs to Issaquah. So that 90% should be rerouted through the 18th route. And well, to help with that, also to help with traffic in the meantime, I am a big fan of public transportation. So I, I think we need to really think and focus into developing a small bus system. Like currently, we already have a Metro Flex, I think, coming in October. And that would be a great thing. And I think, again, that really needs to be developed. We need to have more buses and more people using public transportation. And it's affordable. And it reduces traffic on our roads. Also, roundabouts are needed in some places. So yeah, that is my priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Victoria, go to Sam, Katja, and then Marquez. The question is, Issaquah Highlanders expressed concerns about crime and safety in this year's community survey. What do you think are the biggest issues of crime and safety in Issaquah? And how would you address them? Starting with Victoria.
Thank you. We have on council certainly also heard concerns about crime and safety from the community. And across our region, there has been increase, especially in property crime. So firstly, wanted to acknowledge that and that it's something we're facing across the region. In Issaquah, we have taken steps to ensure that our police are fully resourced and that they are able to focus on crime. As I mentioned, we have co-response now with behavioral health specialists that are able to address other calls that the police get. So the police can focus on crime. And actually, as a council member, I was able to do a ride-along recently with our police. And we, there was a crime that occurred at a retailer. The suspects were stopped. I witnessed the entire process. And I think that it is, it is really important to note that we have worked really closely with the businesses to make sure that they are, they are collaborating with us and we are collaborating with them. When crimes occur, that we get there fast. We are able to stop that as a preventative measure for future crime. So the city works very closely with the business community on that, meeting regularly with our businesses to coordinate those responses and to share information. I, I, I think also, as we are seeing new trends, we need to also, it's very important, I think, that we share. And so the city can share information about what can be done to prevent these incidents because it is certainly very important that we, that we have a public that, that knows how to avoid such crimes. So thank you.
Thank you. Sam, you're next.
I think one of the best ways to address this problem is, like I mentioned before, is better policing practices, is paid training hours, potentially if need be, a bigger police force if they feel like they're low on staff. And I feel like neighborhood watch programs are important. I feel like if you see something, say something, that sort of thing. I feel like apps and chat applications like Nextdoor are very productive. Even if you can't talk to your neighbor face-to-face, go on Nextdoor. Say, hey, I saw this unmarked van rolling through the neighborhood last night. Just be aware. And beyond that, I think personal self-defense is also important as well. And whatever degree of that you feel is best for you, I think you should pursue that because personal responsibility is definitely the other side of personal freedom on that same coin. So, thank you.
Thank you. Katja?
Okay. So as a member of Issaquah Highlands Community Association Board of Directors for two years, I certainly have been hearing all of those issues because they also, I've seen all of those surveys. Also, I am a board president at Ashford at Vista Park Community. And our condo community was basically a subject of five robberies in the past two years. And what I see is happening, we basically have to inform our residents better. And we have to make sure that residents are making all steps to prevent those crimes happening to them, first of all. Like, do not leave your cars opened. Do not leave valuables in your cars. I know that we've been talking about this very many times, but it's still something that needs to be done. I am a big fan of prevention rather than consequences after the, after something is happening. So, yes, so all of the rehabilitation programs are very important. So people who are currently experiencing mental illness, drug abuse, homelessness that leads them to crime, they need to be taken care of. That's, that's a big thing for me. And well, I think also the work of our police department together with our residents is very important. And I've mentioned this before, that our residents sometimes do not have enough information about the stuff that is going on. I know that was a meet-and-greet with our police department members and not that many people came because, simply because they didn't know. So I think it's a good idea to have neighborhood watch groups. And yeah, so that is basically my position. Thank you.
Thank you. Marquez?
So I work at Rite Aid Pharmacy over on Gilman. And we get shoplifters quite often. Multiple times, I've had to call 911 because my manager can't go out and tackle them, although she would like to. So it goes to a switchboard somewhere outside of Issaquah. And I tell them where we're at, what's going on. And they say something to the effect of, oh, you want Issaquah Police. Let, let me get you over to them. That's who I was trying to call in the first place. There's something wrong in the system that we're having to go through other means to get to our police. So that's how I've experienced this personally. I think everyone can agree that proper funding, proper resources, proper training will certainly add to the value of our police force. There's also matters of poverty and homelessness and addiction. It's going to take a collaborative effort to address all of these issues. I don't think there's any one perfect solution for it all. But one bite at a time, we can, we can start to cut into it.
Thank you. Our next question, I have a little, little surprise in. Issaquah has a long history of environmental stewardship. Did you read the news today? We are Washington's first lead gold city. Woohoo! Now you can cheer. No, you can do it later. As a city council member, I'd like to know, and this is not the final question. So leave that up, Chelsea, though. This is a good indicator. I had enough time to sneak this one in. I wanted to because the lead gold, you know. As a city council member, how would you contribute to Issaquah's leadership role in the environment? The sequence is Marquez, Katja, Sam, and Victoria.
So I would start with increased awareness and participation in recycling programs, park cleanups, just general welfare of the environment. Now, that can come to auto emissions, use of contaminants that, that could flow into water. You know, there's, there's all sorts of aspects to it. But as I said before, I think we do a very good job as far as having our parks and trails and pathways and things like that. And as a community that likes to be outdoors, I, I feel that people would welcome it and even partake, if it was more publicized, about maybe once a month, park cleanup or something. I saw, again, from my balcony, this was about a month and a half ago, a family out across Issaquah Creek going around. And these kids were, you know, they looked to be two, three, five years old or so, picking up trash. I was inspired by that. I went out later that week and did a little myself. Nothing, nothing major. But little things like that, I'm sure you've all heard the commercials. If we all do one little thing, it becomes a million little things. It becomes one big thing, so on and so forth, snowball effect. I don't know really what else to say on that.
I said it then? Okay.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to Katja.
Okay. So while preparing actually for my campaign, I was looking through all of our city codes and all of the plans that we currently have and all of the strategic plans that we have. And I can say that we have a pretty good revision of a Title 18. And it takes a good care of our environment when we're developing the city, because we just had it revised. Now, with our environmental stewardship, we have a great plan. We have a great city plan, but it's very much a comprehensive. We have a great city plan, but it's very much a comprehensive plan. And when looking through the plan, I have not found a, pretty much a single step that would be directing our residents to do something exact. So, I would like basically to have, again, on, again, that's on my agenda, to have a better communication between what plan city is having and what residents should do so these plans come to life. Because despite all of the awards that we're getting, which is great, well, it's not very clear what, what a resident should do to make sure we stay green and we stay beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam, you're next.
I think the biggest thing for our stewardship of our natural wild places here in Issaquah is just continuing education. And I'm very glad that they started, well, restarted teaching classes at the salmon hatchery about the salmon and their ecosystem that they live in and their life cycle. I spent countless weekends in the Boy Scouts backpacking, canoeing, hiking, camping, all over the, the Green Belt of Issaquah and Redmond and Kirkland and all over western Washington. So, I, I know how privileged we are to have forests and streams as clean as they are. So, I think continuing education and delegating trailhead refurbishment projects to Boy Scout troops like mine and other Boy Scout troops is an easy way for city council to get things done effectively while also taking hands off and letting other members of the community participate in that refurbishment and get everybody involved in learning what it means to have, you know, oil streaks in the water in the streams and to be aware of microplastics and trash on trailheads. I mean, I think it just does wonders for folks who are just like, oh, I had no idea that this was the case or that that was the case. So, I think that is, I think that's the key element there. Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria, you're last.
One of the very favorite things that I was able to be a part of as a city council member was working with the Save Cougar Mountain group, which was a group of very active community members who are working to conserve and protect a large area, 46 acres of forested hillside on Cougar Mountain. And with the community, with this upswelling of community support, we were able to put that land into the hands of the public. It will be there for generations to come to enjoy these really beautiful hiking trails. It's now an extension of Harvey Manning Park. There's a nice playground and then some nice, very walkable trails there that go down to actually the transit center. So, it's one of these amazing cases where we were able to connect trails with a transit center and there will also be affordable housing in the near term because of the, the planning of council. And so, we need to be very proactive, making sure that we do protect these beautiful natural areas we have in the city going forward. That is certainly something I'm passionate about and I know that the community shares that passion. We also, while I was council president fairly recently, have adopted this Issaquah Climate Action Plan where we not only make sure that the city walks the walk in reducing our climate footprint and taking action to prepare for smokier, smokier summers and these effects of climate that are impacting us right now, but also to make sure that the community is with us in this effort. And the LEED certification is also a great testimony to the hard work of our sustainability staff who are doing a great job leading the way. So, on council, I will continue to push for sustainability and it's truly one of the things that make it such a great place to live here.
Thank you. And this is the final question, this next one, Chelsea, so you can go there. In May of this year, the U.S. Surgeon General issued an advisory on the epidemic of loneliness and isolation in the United States and laid out a strategic framework to advance social connection. What role do you think the city of Issaquah should play addressing the epidemic of loneliness and isolation? We start with Victoria, go to Sam, Katja, and then Marquez. Victoria, you're first.
Well, all of you who came here this evening decided to sit inside and it's a beautiful evening outside. So, first of all, I just wanted to say thank you all for coming here. And being on council, one of the things that I have truly enjoyed is getting to meet people from all different parts of the city that have all different backgrounds and, and the business community and the environmental community, nonprofits in town, just getting to make all of those connections. And so, I think that one of the things as, as a candidate, but also as a council member, that's really important is continuing to use my voice as an elected and as a representative of you to make these connections. And I, I know that that has certainly helped me feel an integral part of this community and hopefully through making those connections and being, and working with the community that also reduces the epidemic of loneliness. Certainly also during COVID, we realized that there were barriers to participation in the public processes where people might want to participate, but maybe they have childcare needs or they have a job that interferes with the normal time of meetings. And so, I think another thing that we can do to help connect with the community is, as we've done, we've allowed for hybrid meetings, we've allowed, or we've provided opportunities for hybrid meetings as well as providing different times for, and different ways that council can interact and make connections. Council also goes out into the community, which is a recent change and very positive. So, we have meetings and listening sessions with you where you are, which is important because then we hear from lots of different voices, which helps us make better decisions.
Thank you. Sam is next.
I think that, once again, I mean, social gatherings are incredibly important and the mental health crisis epidemic has hit young folks especially hard. I think af, during the lockdown, the mental health crisis got especially bad for students because they were isolated. Everyone was afraid. There was fear, there was panic. They didn't know what to do. They felt alone. And I feel like in times of crisis, in times where no one really knows what's going on, we need those mediums of community more than ever. I think events like Salmon Days Festival and other festivals and other gatherings and town hall meetings and meetings like this are vital to the fabric of a community and what makes it strong. So, when we need community most, when there is a crisis, when there is a problem, a community-wide problem, we need to be here for these events. I think it's vital. Thank you.
Thank you. Katja.
Okay. So, regarding epidemic of loneliness, you know, I'm, I'm running a dance studio, so basically no one is lonely there. So, first of all, I would like to say that there are just so many opportunities to volunteer in our city and, again, not that many people know about that. I'm, I'm becoming now a member of our Kiwanis Club. And I have first time heard about Kiwanis. I lived in America for 20 years and the first time I heard about that was probably two years ago. So, I've never heard about that. There is not enough community outreach from the, from all of those clubs and opportunities that give people opportunity to be connected to other people. It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to cost a lot. Like, let's say, taking dance lessons does cost money or bringing your child somewhere to the pool, it does cost money. But there are a lot of programs that are actually free and that can be utilized and people simply don't know about that. And that is what I'm also talking about when I'm saying our residents should be in touch with the city. And that's, I think it's a city's prerogative to make residents, to, to keep them in touch and to keep them informed as, well, you are here tonight and we have a meeting, but see, we don't have that many people. People don't know about that. Not many people know we have elections coming up August 1st. People are surprised that only, well, according to statistics, 20% of people are voting in primary election. So, people have no information. And I think we are, well, the city is losing opportunities to show people how many, how many options they have to not stay alone, to participate in the life of the city in different forms and to just not be by themselves. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Marquez.
So, I speak from experience when I tell you that loneliness, mental health, and addiction are interrelated. The opposite of these maladies is connection and it's service that has helped me personally in my recovery. And that is primarily why I want to run for office, why I want to serve. It keeps my head, it keeps my head focused and when I'm out in the people and connected, there's a sense of purpose. And I think a lot of people get that from volunteering, from being involved with other people. The hardest part about it is making people aware of what is available. And that's been mentioned already tonight. So, I think that more programs would help, but it's more important to get the word out and make them known that, of their availability. There are a lot of things that I came across purely by chance. I wasn't seeking anything, but I found out about them. And we can't just rely on chance. We need to be proactive in this matter. And I think that everyone involved can put that forward and we can all do this together. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to join everyone else in the room here tonight and thank all of you for being here tonight, but especially for putting in the great effort that it is to run for public office. Thank you and all of you, join me please and thank you again. Now, that's a rousing applause. That's a real thank you. And you get to thank them personally for a little while. The forum is over, but Blakely Hall is open for the next half an hour till 8:30, so you have an opportunity to ask those questions that I may not have had a chance to ask. I'm sorry when I got so many. I also want to send out a thank you to Highlands Council and especially to Lindsay Pinkston for bringing this back to Blakely Hall. It was, it was a long time there, but thank you very much. And I'll be here for a little bit too. So, thank you all for coming and thanks to the people who watch us on video. Thank you.